... board and will become part of the record. If it is received during the meeting but after an item is heard, it will not be read, but will become part of the record. In order to ensure staff receives your comment during the meeting, it is recommended that you send your comments to info@tam.cah.gov. This is for the public early in the meeting. Note, there is a 300-word limit for comments. So before we go on, I'm going to ask the commissioners and staff to mute their microphones, if possible, for the duration of this meeting and only unmute if when speaking. This will help to minimize feedback and background noise and allow staff to give a clear audible presentation. After staff has concluded their report, I will ask commissioners if they have questions or comments. Then I will open the item to the public comment. And finally, I'll bring it back to the commission for any additional comments and a motion on any action item. Please keep in mind that the clerk will conduct a roll call vote on each issue item, so you will need to unmute. So we are now going to commissioner comments. Does anyone have any? Just speak up if you do. Okay. All right, I'm going to now go to Commissioner, our Executive Director, who's also going to administer an oath of office.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Arnold. I would like to start my Executive Director's report by welcoming a new Commissioner to the TAM board. Urban Carmel is appointed as the Mill Valley representative. So before we go any further with this evening's meeting, I will administer the oath of office. So Commissioner Carmel, if you could unmute and repeat the oath after I read it. And I'll read it in segments, and then you repeat and so forth. I, Urban Carmel.
I, Urban Carmel.
solemnly swear or affirm.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I'll support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Carmel.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Arnold, if I may continue with the Executive Director's report.
We, I just got a message from Director Kate Sears. She needs to be let into the meeting. She's locked out.
Okay, we're working on that.
Okay, great. Okay, go ahead.
I think it's just a microphone issue. She can hear us. Okay, Commissioner Sears, we're working on it, so if you can bear with us. So, good evening, this is Ann Richmond, the Executive Director of TAM. And I have a PowerPoint format for my Executive Director's report tonight, just to give you all something to look at while I'm walking through these items. The EDR was sent out and the written report is posted on, with the materials for this evening's meeting. This is the first TAM board meeting since the shelter-in-place orders went into effect. And I would like to start with a heartfelt thanks to all the essential workers in the community. Thank you so much for all that you do. And also a thank you to TAM's board, our partners, our staff, and all of our families, excuse me, for their flexibility and support during this time. The stay-at-home order has had quite an impact on us. Staff has been working remotely since March 17th. Numerous events, meetings, presentations, et cetera, have been postponed or rescheduled. Capital projects have been affected in various ways, some positive, some with challenges. Some of our programs have been impacted, such as the crossing guard item on tonight's agenda, as well as the cancellation of shared rides under the Get to Smart program, which is still offering non-shared rides, transitioning safe routes to school activities to support distance learning, and several others. Finally, as you've probably heard, the faster proponents decided in March to not pursue placing a measure on the November ballot in light of the current economic pressures. Those are just a few of the impacts, and many of the other items in this report will have this aspect to them as well. Another item was that earlier this month, the five MTC commissioners from the North Bay, including Commissioner Connolly, sent a letter to MTC and to the Legislative Delegation offering support for an economic stimulus package that would fund construction-ready transportation projects. This was similar to ERA from 2009, for those of you who remember that. And the idea is that these projects could create jobs, kickstart economic activity, and fund important transportation projects. The Marin projects include those listed here, the Marin-Sonoma Narrows, North-South Greenway, Bellin Boulevard, Sir Francis Drake Road Rehab, and Transit Improvement, as well as the multi-county State Route 37 near-term improvements. This is not intended to be a complete list of all priorities within the county, just mentioning those that are most ready to proceed to construction in the short term. Next slide, please. So with all the challenges, we do want to note that there are still some reasons to celebrate this month at TAM. This week saw the 50th anniversary, anniversary of Earth Day, as I'm sure you are all aware. In lieu of any in-person festivities, we created a video and a slide deck that are available online at the link in the written report or on TAM's website. And I'd like to thank Vice Chair Fredericks for inspiring us to do these.
Yay, Alice.
It is also the 20th anniversary of the Safe Routes to School program, which started right here in Marin, and it's the 15th anniversary of TAM itself. A recently released 2019 annual report includes a timeline of milestones and achievements from those 15 years. You saw the draft report at your February meeting, and it's now available online. We'll follow with print and hard copies once things reopen, and we can print and mail. Next slide, please. I wanted to say a little bit more about safe routes that I mentioned earlier. The Safe Routes to School staff continues to get out the message of the program even while school sites are closed. They've created distance learning activities, online safety and skills classes that teachers and students can use, and they're holding remote task force meetings to prepare for the future. As well, they're sponsoring online contests for students, such as the April Walk and Roll Art and Poetry Contest, and the upcoming May Recession Challenge, which promotes physical activity even while staying at home and in close neighborhoods. Sounds like a good thing for all of us. We're very glad that the program is able to continue doing its good work during this unusual time. Next slide, please. So a little bit more good news. The North-South Greenway Northern Segment project achieved a huge milestone last week when Caltrans deemed it ready to list. This means that the design for this project is complete, and it's headed up to Caltrans' headquarters to start the construction bidding process. We're anticipating that to be about a three-month process, and we hope that we'll be able to award the contract in the late summer or early fall. For those of you who were at the board meeting in February, you may remember that Caltrans' Director Tony Tavarez was present, and we talked quite a bit about this project. And so we're glad to see that Caltrans staff advanced the project fairly quickly to get to this milestone. So many thanks to Caltrans and to the staff for that. Next slide, please. Back in March, TAM hosted a meeting with partner agencies to discuss issues and solutions for the congestion that was then occurring on downtown Sanderfell Streets, especially in commute times, and with increased smart train frequency and the extension to Larkspur. Obviously, traffic has changed considerably since then, but the meeting was a good exercise for all the parties to come together, learn which solutions were already being pursued, and to do some further brainstorming. The group will continue to convene regularly. This next item in the report is just for kind of information, and I just, we just wanted to make you aware of this site that shows how counties are doing in meeting the social distancing imperatives. This is based on cell phone data, which interestingly is the same data that we use for traffic analysis. So with this site, you can drill down to see any county in the country. And what you see on the screen here is how Marin County was doing at the time that this report was put together. The data is updated every day. I think there's like a 12-hour lag from when they get the data to when they post it. So what's on the screen is just a snapshot, and obviously, everyone can feel free to check it out at their, when they have a chance. Moving on, the California Transportation Commission next week will consider extending deadlines for applications to several of the SB 1 competitive programs. Next month, they will also consider extensions to some of their timely use of funds requirements for agencies reaching project milestones for projects using state funds. CTC is taking these unusual actions as they have heard from agencies that the shelter-in-place requirements are making it harder and slower to accomplish some regular work, so they're graciously responding by considering extensions. This change could affect a number of projects in Marin that are expecting to apply for funds through these programs, as well as those that are already funded and are facing deadlines. And we've been working with CTC staff and keeping our local partners informed as well. Also on the state front, at previous meetings, you may recall that I've mentioned Senator Bill Dodd from Napa had introduced SB 1408, which would have created a tolling infrastructure for State Route 37 to provide funds for much-needed improvements in that corridor. However, with COVID-19, the legislature is likely to focus this year only on the most critical items, though we've heard that this bill will likely be shelved for the year. It could be reintroduced in a future year, and meanwhile, the work at the staff level will continue on developing projects for this important corridor. Finally, as you know, the CARES Act was signed into law a few weeks ago to provide $2 trillion in economic relief related to the pandemic. Included in the bill is $25 billion for transit, which has suffered dramatic ridership and revenue declines in recent weeks. For example, locally, the ferries have seen about a 95% drop in ridership, and the buses somewhere between 70% and 90%, depending on the system and the line. So of that $25 billion, about $1.3 billion came to the Bay Area. And after a rush of activity to determine how to distribute the funds, the MTC Commission yesterday approved the distribution of almost 800 million of that, a little over 60%, with the local operators receiving the amount shown on the chart totaling $46 million. This will provide much-needed financial help for transit, and MTC will return in the coming months to program the remainder of the funds. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Katie, go ahead.
Thank you, Ann. So with, on that last slide, so in terms of the MTC allocation, so basically, do those, do those amounts make those agencies, you know, whole, as it were?
Um, that's a complicated question. I think the short answer is probably not. It will definitely help them in the near term, and the answer to that question obviously also depends on how long this goes on. It probably will sustain them through the remainder of the fiscal year, but if this were to go on for many more weeks or months, I think they would certainly need more support.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think that we have a big thank you to Caltrans, and we should give staff and ourselves a round of applause because this is a great thing that we're going to get very soon, so. Okay. We are now going to MTC reports, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Connolly to do the MTC report.
Good evening, colleagues, and welcome to Director Carmel. Glad to have you on board. A couple of key items from yesterday's MTC meeting, which was virtual as well. But first, a fact that was mentioned at that meeting that I thought you might be interested in, and may or may not fit in with kind of your, your feel out there right now as we get through this shelter-in-place time, and that is that Bay Area traffic is down by about 50% during weekdays. So there's about half as much traffic right now, which has obviously been very noticeable, and actually more of a drop on weekends. In terms of actual items, Ann touched a little bit on one, actually did a great job on one, I'll elaborate to some extent on the CARES Act. But first, another issue that we've had our attention on for quite some time is AB 1487. You may recall, was signed into law late last year, and authorizes the creation of the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, or BFA, as it's now being referred to, the purpose of which would be to potentially put a revenue measure on the ballot Bay Area-wide, all nine counties, toward financing affordable housing. There has been some talk of placing a $10 billion general obligation bond on the November 2020 ballot. Obviously, circumstances have changed in the Bay Area and around the country. So there are still discussions going on, but with the backdrop of some important considerations. Would there, for example, even be an appetite by Bay Area voters to consider any revenue measures, even in the form of a GEO bond at this time? And furthermore, in the changed circumstances we'll be facing, where obviously both transportation and housing are going to be very inextricably linked to the larger issue of, of the economy, and how that's faring, and, and how that's going to look, and what the needs of our region may be, how would the money be spent? So a quick update on where we landed on that. There's going to be some additional polling from proponents occurring very shortly, and we will take this matter up again in the form of kind of a no, a go-no-go decision by the full commission at our May meeting, with the benefit of some polling data, some further thinking, some further outreach. And I know Marin residents and all of you in our cities and towns will certainly want to weigh in on that. There's another issue afoot, and that is putting aside the issue of the bond, let's say the decision is not to go forward now. Does it still make sense to stand up, they're calling it, the new BFA? In other words, is there some independent reason where forming that would make sense to further housing objectives? I and some others raised some important questions, though, around that. Number one, what's the value add? There is quite a bit of existing expertise on housing within MTC and ABAG staff. Would this simply be reorganizing that staff? If so, what would that look like? Would it be bringing on new staff? If so, what's the cost-benefit, and particularly the cost, given that we're going to be in a revenue-challenge environment for all agencies going forward? So with much wrangling where we ended up on that, is a decision on that, two will be now put forth in May. It was postponed, it was actually scheduled to actually be formed theoretically at this meeting. We got it put over till May as well, to get definitive answers on those important questions. So feel free to ask me any questions or follow up on that. ABAG is also taking that up tonight, where Supervisor Redoni is missing this meeting because he's participating in that meeting as well. On CARES, Ann covered it well. It was a great deal of effort by all of our local transit agencies cooperating together and regionally, and working with MTC staff in bringing that package together. And I think our Marin transit agencies fared very well. So again, a thanks to our operators and TAM staff as well in bringing that together. As Ann mentioned, that represents about 60% of the Bay Area allocation, so we have 40% to go. As part of this round, we also determined that it would be good to hear from operators around the region about what safety precautions are in place, and report back to MTC on that. I know our agencies are, are doing a good job in that regard, but those questions were raised, and so we will be hearing reports on that. On the allocation going forward, i.e. the additional 40%, the commission decided to form a blue-ribbon committee, or commission, if you will, to help guide those decisions. And the purpose of the next tranche is going to be a lot different. As Ann touched on, this initial 60% was all about filling the gaping revenue hole that our agencies are immediately incurring. It looks like this will get us at least through the end of the fiscal year, perhaps a little bit beyond, so a lot's going to depend on how this goes forward. But the second tranche really is going to be designed toward operations going forward, actual needs when we factor in a changing world, if you will, right? So, and how the systems really should look as we go forward in the new environment we're likely to find ourselves in. So some exciting questions, but some daunting ones, and all of us will be undoubtedly participating in those. So I, again, appreciate the opportunity to be your representative, representative in that. One last thing on AB 1487, the final action taken on that item yesterday was to form an interim advisory committee. And Leely Thomas of Marin County's Community Development Agency will be sitting on that. So we will have some direct representation, and again, I'm sure much discussion by all, given the importance of those housing issues as well. So thank you. On Marin Transit, Dennis is not here, and furthermore, the main thing is again, that allocation through the CARES Act, which was very good news for Marin Transit, as well as others. Thank you.
Dennis, what are the, what are the, the, how do you spell BFA?
BFA, B-H-F-A, Bay Area Housing Finance Authority.
Perfect, thanks very much. Okay, the next report then is from SMART. I'm going to call on Eric Lukin.
Thank you, Chair Arnold. A couple of quick updates. First off, from SMART, as an agency, everybody there really proud that we're able to continue to provide, continue providing service during this time, albeit a reduced schedule. We're running 16 trips a day during the week instead of the regular 38, and continue to be able to provide the service for those that rely on it, from those on the front lines, first responders during, during this time. But like every other transit agency in the Bay Area, ridership is significantly down, and we're continuing to monitor that. SMART was able to secure some of the funds that were talked about earlier, which will certainly help us out for this current budget year. We did have a SMART board meeting last week. The main item for discussion at that board meeting was, it was the first time we met as a board to debrief Measure I, and the defeat at the ballot box and, and the work that we have cut out for us. Lots of really good discussion at the board level. I think the, the short story is that over the next several months, we're going to have many meetings, community engagement, interaction with stakeholders, getting out into the community as well as inviting stakeholders in, and really trying to do as much listening and learning as possible to try to evaluate what is going to be the next step moving forward. And we're working on a draft plan of, of what that's going to look like. So that's pretty much the update from SMART. Trains are running, albeit a reduced schedule. Passengers on SMART are required to wear facial coverings, both on the train and as they're waiting to get on and off the train. But that pretty much wraps up the update from SMART.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next item is open time for public expression, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. So I'm going to ask Denise, do you have some statements? Okay, great. I believe Molly was.
I have, yeah, I, we do have, yeah, this is Molly Graham. We do have one comment that was received from Cindy Winters, and I will read it as she wrote it. ASHTO is revising its 2012 Bicycle Facilities Guides, which I have in its fourth edition and admire. However, recent advances in technology and design concepts make significant updates essential. For those unfamiliar with acronyms, ASHTO is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It is a behemoth organization located in Washington, DC, where it gathers data and expertise from across the country and is highly influential. The new bike guide will include, but is not limited to, protected bike lanes, electric bikes, motorized scooters, and asphalt artwork. I'm not sure what this last term means, but it is a quote from a reliable source at ASHTO. The manual has been worked on for at least a couple of years. It is now in its early phases, and currently has anticipated a release date of 2022. This may seem slow, but efforts are being made to update the publication in a shorter timeframe than previous years. Given the importance of ASHTO as a source for the Caltrans Highway Design Manual, and specifically its Chapter 1000 covering bicycle transportation design, and given the growing numbers of cyclists both here and in Marin and elsewhere, the release of this new publication is an event to look forward to. From Cindy Winter. And that is the only public comment we have received.
All right. All right, next we have the consent calendar, and I want to ask the board members if there's anything they would like to pull or discuss on the consent calendar. Okay, then do I have, did anyone from the public make, want to comment on the consent calendar, Molly?
No, we have not received any comment.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
James Campbell.
Great, aye. A second. Alice?
Eric Lukin.
Eric, yes, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
To roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Kate Madam Chair, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleveland Knoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Colbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Commissioner Helmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cool?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukin?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Adam Chair, passage unanimously. All right, great. Passage unanimously. All right. We are now going to go to Item 7 on the agenda, which is Marin County Plan Bay Area 2050 Revised Project List and State Route 37 Letter of Commitment. And I'm going to turn this over to Anne.
Very much, Chair Arnold. So we do have a staff presentation for this item. Derek McGill, the Planning Manager, will be presenting. And while Denise clears up the PowerPoint, I'll just say a quick word that we've had several months now of Plan Bay Area 2050 presentations, and this is an important one. This is an action item requesting approval of the project list and the letter of commitment that are to be submitted to MTC. And I will just add that this is another item that was affected by the shutdown and that these items were actually due to MTC prior to this meeting. So we submitted them, but we are coming to you for a board action to approve them at this time. So Derek, if you're ready, I think we're ready on our end to start the presentation.
I am ready. Thank you, Anne, and good evening, Commissioners. So the slide may look familiar to many of you. The Plan Bay Area 2050 is the RTP for the San Francisco Bay Area Region. And in 2008, the Regional Transportation Plan was modified to include transportation and land use planning with the goal overall to reduce GHG emissions for the region from passenger vehicles and VNT. It's important to note that this plan is not a funding program. This is just a plan for how the region will achieve these goals, and it is a requirement for air quality standards for the region. So we'll jump to the next slide. We initially started this process back in early 2019 and developed, and the board accepted a list, just an initial list of projects that were being considered back in April of 2019. Stafford Cole Measure AA, the Vision Plan that we have as an agency, as well as our outreach that was conducted for Regional Measure 3, and worked with your local jurisdictions, both the Planning Directors and Public Works Directors, as well as the transit operators to develop the initial list. In January of 2020 this year, we received a revised financial commitment envelope of 557 million comprised of OBAG funds, STIP funds, and various other local funding sources, including some uncommitted, according to MTC, local funds. Our process is really to include all of our projects into the plan to allow all of our projects to then compete for regional, state, or federal funds when those funds become available. Moving to the next slide, please. So this process in detail is really to fit as many projects as we can into the overarching categories called programmatic categories or into the operations and maintenance category. That allows all of those projects that are included in those categories to advance into the plan and compete for funding when they become available. The second step we took in this process was to identify projects that have an expectation of regional funds. These are projects that were identified in Regional Measure 3 or could be included within Caltrans SHOP program, which is their highway operations and preventative maintenance plan, unpavement plan, sorry. The third step in this process is to identify the eligibility around each of the fund sources that were assigned for Marin County and make sure that we are aligning apples to apples with projects that can receive the funds of each category. And then finally, we look closely at the project delivery timeframe and when projects would need to access funds. Projects that are in later years of the plan typically have more funding sources available to them because more funding can be assigned to later projects based on this process. So with that, we'll jump to the next slide. Overall, this is how the project list has been developed, and these are the details of each category within the project list. It's important to note that the region and MTC is committed to a fix-it-first operations and maintenance strategy. So we want to maintain the current status of our transit operations, our transit capital condition, as well as our local streets and roads PCI index. That requires 77% of our Measure AA funds and 75% of our Measure B, which is our vehicle registration fund, according to MTC's analysis. And so those funds are excluded from this analysis and shown in the chart as the local committed fund. There's also a funding program within the Regional Measure 3 called Transit Capital Funding that is specifically for the North Bay, and those funds are to be determined. And so we are expected to receive some level of RM3 funding for operations and maintenance projects in Marin County as well. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see that we'll jump into sort of the capacity increasing project section, and these are where we think of a lot of our big projects. And really, a lot of these projects are in need of funding within very near-term horizon. Santa Fe Transit Center relocation, the estimated construction date is 2024. Marin Transit with their recent acquisition of an O&amp;M facility will be starting the design process and moving forward into construction in very early years of a long-range planning process. And that really limits the amount of funding opportunities that can be assigned to these projects with the funds that were allocated to Marin County. Rounding out the list is Larkspur Ferry Parking Garage, and then a more recent project, starting a feasibility study phase, the Bus on Shoulder on Highway 101, study that was just approved on consent, or the contract with, to contractors to begin the feasibility study was just approved on consent. And then finally, we have included the Regional Express Bus Network as a study in the Transit Capacity Increasing Projects. Just given the discussions around faster and regional express bus service, we wanted to explore what a regional express bus service might look like for the region and show support through this process for express bus improvements. As you can see, we are going to need significant amount of regional support for these transit projects. There isn't enough funding allocated within the plan to really fully fund a lot of these projects, and so we'll need to partner with our transit operators in the region to fulfill the funding required for these projects. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see the roadway capacity increasing projects. And this is the other half of the capacity increasing projects we have for the county. Again, we looked at the estimated data construction and tried to line the funding sources based on that data construction. The big one that's on the near-term horizon is the Marin Sanoma Narrows, which has a year expenditure cost estimated at 141 million. Fortunately, there is 90 million identified in Regional Measure 3, which reduces the amount that TAM would be required to assign from our budget through this process. And we are looking for state funding, which is in the regional request funding through the Solutions for Congested Corridors Program. The next big project is on the US 101 I-580 Direct Connector. If you can go back to the previous slide, Denise. The US 101 I-580 Direct Connector escalated into a year of expenditure that the cost of that project rise to $171 million. Regional Measure 3 identified 135 million, and so we'll need to identify additional funding from the region to support the full funding of that project. The big one on the list here is the Resilient State Route 37 Project, which easily exceeds our available funding for the county at 1.3 billion for just the Marin County portion. And so we'll talk a little bit more about State Route 37 in later slides, but we will need significant regional, state, and federal support for that project. Finally, Nevada Boulevard, because it does increase capacity listed on this project sheet, and the city of Nevada with the county, oh, the TAM funds provided through Measure A has fully funded that project. So there's no regional request required. Jumping to the next slide, you'll see some of the programmatic categories, which are really the catch-all here. And these funding levels are really aligned with previous historical committed levels for these types of categories. And you'll see things like our minor highway improvements, which is heavily funded from the SHOP, which is the State Highway Operations and Pavement Plan, as well as through our Measure AA funding for interchanges. There's a large amount of funding required to maintain and build out our bike and pedestrian network, and we have included a very healthy budget compared to previous cycles for bike and pedestrian facilities. And there's various other catch-alts to allow safety and security projects move forward, intersection improvements projects, and multimodal street state projects, among other types, as well as emission reduction technology, which would allow our alternative fuel programs to sort of apply for state, regional, state, and federal funding. So with that, we'll move on to the last slide, which are focused on State Route 37. Those, before we jump to State Route 37, that completes the discussion around the project list that we're asking for you to accept tonight so we can forward that back to MTC. The second half of the action tonight is really around the letter of commitment for State Route 37. MTC did a project performance assessment of $250 million plus projects. State Route 37 was included in that process. It performed very well in terms of the benefit cost ratio. However, in MTC's equity assessment, they did not perform as well, and they flagged it with, for having challenges to affordability and health for the region. And so MTC required county transportation agencies such as TAM and the North Bay, GTA, to sign off on a letter of commitment to explore how we can improve the project performance of that, this project. That's on the next slide, if this can be moved in, which details some of the committed actions that the North Bay counties have agreed to explore. The top one is reforming the regional transit fare policy and consistent regional means-based discounts for fares and tolls on facilities. All the North Bay counties would like to explore what that might mean and how that might work for State Route 37. We'd also like to provide transit alternatives on toll facilities such as State Route 37 and are committed to exploring transit alternatives in that corridor. We also are working on that project to adapt to de-levelize, and the project supports a number of conservation efforts, including urban growth boundaries and protection of conservation lands. The letter was signed by our Executive Director as these items were due to MTC as noted. However, we still are asking for board approval tonight on the, this letter of commitment as well as the revised project list, which is Attachment B in your package, started on page 55. So with that, I will turn it over to our Board Chair to begin any questions that the Commission may have.
Thank you very much, Derek. Anyone have a question, please?
Judy, Madam Chair, two quick questions. Previously, we have heard about potential of 11 interchanges with 101 that are under study. Would those be included within the category of minor highway improvements and SHOP funds?
Yes, those projects are included within the minor highway improvements. They're rather, they're more operationally focused, and they don't have large capacity increasing elements that would require them to be identified separately. And so this is a way for those projects to all proceed into project development and compete for funding should funding be identified.
Thank you. And the second question is, and I should probably know the answer to this, are RM3 funds unstuck from the court action yet?
Not sedate. Go ahead, Anne.
Okay, this is Anne Richmond. So the latest information on RM3 is that it is still in the court system. As you may have been aware, the courts slowed down their scheduling of cases this spring in response to the shelter-in-place orders. So I think originally, MTC staff had anticipated a spring hearing date, and I believe that's been pushed back to early summer now. So they're expecting to have resolution over the summer.
Okay, Gary, did you have?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Derek. Good report. Just a couple of questions, out of curiosity more than anything. That is, first with regard to the Santa Fe Downtown Transit Center, 51 million, 30 which has been funded presumably. I'm just curious, since it's still in secret, and there's several alternatives, some would say five, some would say two, but I'm curious, how, how firm that 51 million is? Where did that, where did that come from?
So during this process, we worked with the project sponsors to identify the project costs identified. So we received these numbers for this project from Golden Gate staff. And knowing that this process is asking to put, you know, a firm capital number down for a number of projects in the planning or early conceptual phases, it's more of an art than a science for these particular numbers. And so I don't know exactly how Golden Gate developed that number. It may have been emerging as some of the alternatives, but the number was provided by their staff and then escalated up to the year of construction, the number that they gave us.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Obviously, it's still somewhat, somewhat undetermined. Probably, I don't know, feels somewhat reasonable, but it was 51 million, a fairly precise number as opposed to 50, let's say. So I was curious about that. And then second, on the roadway capacity schedule, there's a fairly significant, fairly significant amounts under county discretionary, discretionary budget. And I was just curious how, how certain those funds are.
On the county discretionary funds, these are the funds that TAM receives through OBAG, which comes in cycles, as well as the STIP and RTIP process, which we have borrowed against STIP funds in the past and are not expecting to have STIP funds available to us until 2028, under the current revenue estimates prior to the COVID, sort of reestimating the process that everybody's going through. So needless to say, the county discretionary budgets are just preliminary planning estimates at this point. They're not very firm, and they do not align with any particular funding cycle at this point.
So the county hasn't, commitment's too strong, I realize, that I'll say committed to fund these projects. Then second part of that question would be, in the amount specified? I mean, it's sort of arbitrary, and I'm just trying to get a comfort level to see whether or not these things are going to get done. And that's a fairly significant funding, you know, go down the list. So maybe, maybe Judy can help me better understand what county commitment in the discretionary budget, what does that mean?
These are planning estimates at this point, and there's not a commitment that is being made to any particular project to fund or commit funding during this process. We're basically trying to demonstrate to the region and to the state and the feds that our regional transportation plan, we have enough revenues in the foreseeable future to fund the projects that we are moving forward with. And as such, this is really just a very high-level planning effort rather than a particular financial plan for any individual project. This is really just the best guess for a large array of project activities that may occur on the state highway system in Marin County over a, you know, 30-year period.
Well, just a quick follow-up on that, if I could. What is the, what is the history been, you know, going forward, it's going to be trying, I don't know over what length of time, but over certainly a period of time, it's going to be trying for a period for everybody, county and cities included. But what is the history been of the county funding those, those, the sense that they've been satisfied the entire year? You know, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not this is real deal or wishful thinking.
You know, that's a, that's a great question. In terms of our history of funding projects, I think we have to look towards projects like Marin-San Moneros, where we've been able to deliver on our commitments that we've made, and the planning studies that have gone underway for years. Moving forward with projects like Tiburon Boulevard, over interchange, you can see that there's sort of this process that all these projects go through to advance from a planning stage through design stage into funding. I would say overall, as a county, we've been able to deliver on our commitments, and we're not making what we feel like are overly optimistic commitments to projects. But there is a natural process that all these projects have to go through, that introduce a lot of variability into whether or not we are able to deliver on what we're planning on doing through this process. That's part of the reason why we do this every four years, is to sort of revisit the process and make sure that we're advancing toward what we're committing to do. This year, we're, this process, we're in a little bit of a different stage than we have been in previous years with having a local Measure AA funding source that has a highway capacity or highway interchange category of funds, as well as funding items such as the 101-580 direct connector, and providing matching funds from Marin-San Moneros. You couple our local funds that we've been able to raise through the Measure AA process with the recent passage of Measure, the regional Measure 3, I think that changes the game in terms of the funding available for our projects, and really allows us to start advancing a larger array of projects than we have done in previous cycles. I know that's not exactly the answer you're looking for, but we are aware of overcommitting, and this is a pretty, this is a fiscally constrained process that we're going through to sort of set a realistic check on what projects are included in the plan.
Hey, Derek.
Thank you.
Judy, can I ask a question, follow-up to that? It's Katie.
Right.
Derek, could you just, could you just define for me again, or for us, what the county discretionary budget actually is comprised of? It's Measure AA funds. I think that may be part of what Gary's getting, or the mayor's getting.
That's good, Katie.
Sure. It is made up of our Measure AA and Measure B vehicle registration fees, as well as the funds that are controlled by TAM from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, the Transportation for Clean Air Funds, and the local partnership funds that we get from the states for having a transportation sales tax. Those are augmented, and this includes as well some of the state and federal funds, such as the RTIP, which is our Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which is the state highway funding primarily, or state funding for various capacity increasing programs. And then our O-BAG funds, which are approximately $10 million that we get every five years. So it's a wide array of funds. The table on page 50 of the report details the amount of each fund.
I got it. I just, I think that, and that county discretionary budget is actually, those are monies that are coming through TAM, and just to assure the mayor that it's not the county board supervisors that gets to decide where all those monies go.
Ah, yeah.
Thank you.
These are the funds that are expected to receive by TAM and the Street DPs.
Thank you, Derek. All right. Anyone else have questions or comments? Okay. Anyone from the public have a question or comment? Molly?
We did not receive any public comment on this. Thank you.
All right, okay. So, I mean, as the general manager, too, what are we voting on tonight?
So, we are requesting that the board approve the project list and the Highway 37 state route, excuse me, State Route 37 letter of commitment.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I will move that the board accepts the revised Marin County Ben Plan Bay Area project list for 2050, and accepts the letter of commitment for State Routes 37 as signed.
So I was second?
Second.
Right. All those, the niece is going to call the roll.
Okay. I'll do you that. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleveland Knoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Colbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Commissioner Helmer?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Aye.
Commissioner Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucan?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Madam Chair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right. We are going to go to number eight, which is to approve retention bonus contract amendment for the crossing guard contract. And I'm going to look at our general manager, who will bring in any staff we need.
Thank you. This is Ann Richmond, and this is also an action item, requesting the TAM board to approve a retention bonus for the program and authorize the executive director to execute an addendum to the contract with all city management services to make a one-time payment of $1,700 for each Marin crossing guard or supervisor that meets certain criteria. And to present this item, I'd like to ask Dan Cherry or the program manager to present.
Okay, Ann, appreciate that. The whole reason we're doing this is we wish to maintain a established group of guards that are well-trained and qualified, so that when the program resumes, we have that core of guards in place. It's a very huge issue to try to hire guards immediately. Right now, we have 100 guards in Marin that are part of the program. We have another six guards that are part of our program that are paid for by other school districts. And we have about 11 guards at any given time. That number varies. We have an alternate so that we can handle the everyday occurrence of guards that can't work their assigned sites. In addition, the program has five guards that, no, I'm sorry, five people that work to supervise those guards. That is in addition to the one manager we have. This program will not affect the manager, but the supervisors are on an hourly basis. There are three additional guards that are directly paid for by school districts with all city management, and they do that at the same rate that the guards are that are done through our program. Guards, as I mentioned, are hard to retain even during the best of time. And now with the shelter in place, it's becoming especially difficult. The job involves a split shift, working in the rain, working in the wind, at times of the year, working in the darkness. Extremely challenging to get staff to work, to work in those environments. So as Ann mentioned, we're hoping to pay each guard $1,400. And we've talked to ACMs, and they've told us that there are hard costs associated with paying that would be an additional $300. So that we pay, basically TAM pays each guard $1,700. This would be for all the guards I mentioned, the direct guards we have, the alternate guards we have, the guards paid for by other school districts, including the ones that directly pay their guards, and the five supervisors. School is out now, as we've heard, for the remainder of the spring, and we're assuming for the summer session as well. Should school resume in August, which we hope it does, we wish to retain the guards, and by offering them a retention basis bonus, it may have them stay around. They would be paid if they worked any, if they worked six hours in any two-week cycle for the remainder of 2020. However, in the event that school doesn't start again in August, staff would like the chance to change this over from a retention bonus to a longevity bonus, and make the bonuses available effective the middle of September. The reason we looked at the middle of September is that's approximately 26 weeks after the schools close down. And most unemployment benefit packages are around 26 weeks. It's our goal to not make things more difficult for the guards by offering them money before their unemployment benefits may have run out, so that that's why that timing is involved. Should a guard have some case where they'd rather hold off on getting the longevity bonus, we can work with them. But we feel this isn't the best, in interest of the guards, and it is our intent to do, it is staff's hope to do the best we can to maintain the guards. Should all of the guards be paid, that would be about 125 bonus checks that we would pay to ACMs to actually, you know, pay out. It would be approximately $212,000. However, by not having the program since March 16th for the remainder of the spring semester, and assuming we're not going to replace any guards in the summer, as well as not paying the reimbursement program for the transit way we pay guards to utilize the buses, that's going to result in a savings to the program of around $600,000. So the $212,000 could be absorbed by that. So, in conclusion, staff's recommending we modify the existing agreement with ACMs, offer the bonuses as mentioned, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions? Okay, I don't see any.
Judy, I have a.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Mike, did you call me? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Certainly, I think we all wish to retain the guards. They're important, important to our school districts, and so I'm not questioning the intent. I am curious, why 1,700?
Um, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. It's not our intent to replace money, but at the starting place, we looked at how much the guards make, and how much they would be making if they go on unemployment. And according to some investigative work that we came up with, it was around 60% of their normal wages. And then, we looked at how many weeks were left in the school year, and how many guards normally work over the summer and such forth. And $1,400 is the delta between the 60% that unemployment would pay and what they would have lost. However, I want to make it very clear, this is not a salary makeup, is that would affect unemployment compensation. It's just a bonus, but that just happens to be how the numbers would have worked out.
And when do they, when do they receive the 1,700, or the, yeah, 1,700?
Well, it's 1,400 the guards receive.
Well, that's why, yeah, I'm not sure what that.
But, but it would be the sooner of returning to work, whenever that is, and working six hours in any two weeks remainder of the year. So if they work two week, six hours in August, and another six hours in October, then they'll get paid in October. They work six hours in August, and six hours in the first two weeks of September, they'll get paid in the middle of September. So it's whenever they meet that qualification. However, if they'd not had an opportunity to work before the middle, middle of September, we just issue the bonus at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And are there any comments from the public?
There were no comments on this item.
All right, thank you. All right. So, the motion we force is to authorize the executive director to execute an addendum two of the contract with all city management services to make a one-time payment of $1,700 for each Marin crossing guard and supervisor that meets certain criteria. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Carmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleveland Knoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Colbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Commissioner Helmer?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Lucan?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Madam Chair, how do you vote?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, unanimous, everyone. Thank you. All right. We are now on item number nine, and this is a TAM memorandum of understanding with Marin Clean Energy, and there's an attachment, so I'm going to ask the executive directors or staff bringing this, presenting this.
Yes, there is. I'll turn it over to Derek McGill again to present on this item, and this is an action item. We're requesting the board to authorize the executive director to enter into the memorandum of understanding with MCE for the CAL EVIP program, and to authorize $80,000 for the Marin County Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program through CAL. So Derek, if you're ready, can take it away.
I am. Good evening again, commissioners. A little bit of background around this item in front of you tonight. In January of this year, MCE, formerly known as Marin Clean Energy, approached TAM and the other county transportation agencies in its service area regarding an opportunity to attract CEC funding for electric vehicle charging infrastructure throughout MCE's service area. That program is known as the CAL EVIP program, and it's administered by the California Energy Commission by its contractors, the Center for Sustainable Energy. CAL EVIP is a web portal that provides incentives for EV chargers, installations, as well as the technical assistance and rebate management for light-duty chargers for, throughout various service areas in California. This program's been ongoing for a couple of years, and MCE has expressed interest and led the path forward for applying for this program to attract CEC funding. At our update to the TAM board regarding our alternative fuel program in February of this year, we noted that we were coordinating closely with MCE on this program, and wanted to bring back details to you at a later date, and that later date is. and that later date is tonight. So there's been a lot of coordination underway and a lot of development of a MOU and program structure for this program. And I will run through some of the major points of this funding, this program. We are asking for approval of the MOU and the funding tonight, but want to note that things are still very much in flux. And TAM's staff intention is based on board approval to enter into the MOU, generally consistent with this outline. If there are any significant changes based on ongoing negotiations with CEC, we can bring this back to the board in May. However, there is at least some interim deadlines that made us come to tonight's board with the MOU and the funding commitment. So the program, the way this would work is a Cal EBIT website and web portal would be developed to basically pool various local funds, MCE funds, into a bank that would allow for site hosts to access these rebates in a streamlined fashion. MCE is committing up to $5.2 million in funding for this program for up to four years in an attempt to attract 8.4 million in CEC funding. That would include close to $80,000 of TAM funding for just the initial year of the program. That funding level is consistent, if not at the high end of the other county transportation agencies. The way the program and the CEC funding is administered, Contra Costa County is designated the highest need county, and the CEC has asked MCE to consider splitting its service area into multiple years' applications. So for the initial year, MCE and TAM would self-fund chargers within Marin County, but would still receive the technical support, streamlined grant applications, as well as the marketing and outreach offered through the CEC program. TAM and MCE would then apply for funding, FY, the following fiscal year, and we would be a higher need county at that point based on Contra Costa having already received funding. We would move up the list and be very attractive in the following cycle. The program funds both Level 2 and Level 3 fast chargers, and TAM and MCE are proposing to only fund Level 2 charging equipment. That is a typo in the staff report I just noted. We are only looking at Level 2 standard charging installations for this program. The rebate amount that would be administered through this program is higher than the amount by MCE or TAM individually, but it is reduced when those two rebates are cumulatively bundled together. So we are asking and coordinating closely with CEC on an exemption for Marin County Public Agencies to maintain the current level of commitment for those agencies of being eligible for up to $6,000 in rebates. The program is designed to work with a wide range of eligible locations, including commercial, workplace, and public facilities, as well as retail locations. And TAM is proposing to only fund public agency chargers at this point. However, we are still awaiting CEC approval on that. Backmed funding and any regional air district funding would be stackable to this program, and that could increase funding for public agencies as well. MCE is moving forward with this application on a quick timeline to meet the CEC's schedule. And there is currently a deadline of May 11 that we owe an MOU and final funding commitment, Level 2. So that's why we're in front of you tonight. As we mentioned, there are a number of items in this proposal that are still in flux. However, we want to generally move forward with an MOU and continue our commitment to electric vehicle charging infrastructure in Marin County. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Katie, Director Bryce.
All right. Thanks, Derek. This is really exciting. It's great. Two questions, though. Why are we only funding Level 2 chargers? Or why MCE and TAM is part of this only Level 2 chargers?
Level 3 chargers are very expensive to install, and they would eat up our funding very quickly. So if we were to install Level 3 chargers with our limited local funds, we would only be able to install a very limited number of chargers in the county.
So.
Maybe up to.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Maybe up to four chargers.
And how many Level 2 chargers would you be able to fund?
Level 2 chargers, on average, are significantly cheaper. They're about $5,000 to $6,000, and so a couple hundreds.
Okay, all right. And then the second question is, and I see that the, that the CEC is, hasn't approved this, says we're still stuck on this only public agencies piece. That's a policy, that's a policy position on our part, and it may be up for discussion at some point, but also I guess it's an issue for, potentially for the CEC?
The CEC is expressing desire to maintain their program elements as they've rolled out in other programs throughout the state. They would like to maintain a very consistent formula and very consistent eligibility requirements to make it easier for their administration. In terms of this effort, we are proposing to maintain our current policy. I think once the CEC funding becomes real for Marin County, I think it would be appropriate at that point to have the conversation about where our TAM funding can go. Right now, we're just trying to show that we are committed to this structure and make sure that we are moving forward in the best possible position to attract CEC funding in the next cycle.
So wouldn't it make our proposal more attractive to the CEC if they're looking for a program that's consistent with the way they're doing things now? That we would not constrain ourselves to only public agency chargers?
The CEC is really focused on the Contra Costa and this, where their funding is going to. So because we are self-funding for Marin County, we're not seeing this as a big issue in CEC's eyes, at least for this initial year. I think that this conversation would be had once the CEC funding gets added to our local funds.
Okay.
At this point, CEC is really focused on what Contra Costa is going to do with the funding and the program discussions with Contra Costa.
I would just, I would just hate for any language in our part of this that potentially we have some discussion to change to dampen the CEC's enthusiasm for funding us. And I also would like at some point to be able to see sort of the calculus or the mapping of where chargers are in the county, what we funded, and where they are. Because I'm feeling like the public agencies have had a lot more help than the general private sector access. And anyway, I just, I question that we're so steadfastly holding on to only public agencies, but that's my own, my opinion.
I, I think our, just to respond to that in short term, we have a number of committed chargers that we are committed to installing. It's approximately 138 chargers within the county. And so part of our thinking is that we would use that existing commitment for attracting the CEC funds through this process. That's a pretty substantial commitment of existing chargers already. We just want to make sure that we have enough money in round two to attract the CEC funding in round two. And with their focus really being on where their dollars are going in Contra Costa and Napa and Solano, we are basically likely to be able to use these $80,000 on public agencies anyways. So we're just trying to make sure that we can keep our commitment to those public agencies.
Can I follow up on that? So Derek, just to follow up on that, MCE does not have the restriction to fund only public agencies. So as a package, I'm assuming that makes this application, sort of joint application, more appealing to the CEC. And MCE is putting in a significant amount of funding. They can do a variety of different kinds. It doesn't have to only be public agencies in Napa, Solano, and Contra Costa. So are, is, are we then, we as, speaking we as a group, TAM and MCE, then able to follow the CEC guidelines? Because we have three other counties that are more flexible, and it's only in Marin that we have the public agency focus? Is that how this is working?
Generally speaking, we would follow the CEC guidance. The money and how it gets divided up on the back end, because it's our funds and we are self-funding.
Right, but that's just for Marin. That's just for Marin, and you've got four counties here, right? So the, the application is for four counties, because that's MCE's territory. Yeah?
Correct. Yes, exactly. And so there's.
So I'm just trying to address Katie's issue about is this appealing to the CEC? I think it can be appealing to the CEC because it's four counties, and it's just Marin that has that one restriction. Is that fair, Derek?
Exactly accurate.
Got it. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments on this? David, yes?
Thank you, Adam Chair. I am very, I too am very glad that this is underway and that we're looking at interagency and regional collaboration on this topic. I have a feeling that the number is really quite small for the amount of overhead time that's going to be taken in doing the MOU and so forth. And in part because we've only spent about 26% of the, the Measure B funding on this category so far. If you look at page 21 in today's agenda, we're way, we're way low on this particular item, as we have been for a few years now, consistently low on expending tho, that essentially allocated funding. I would suggest that we double this, 80,000 to 160,000. That brings us up to being about 50% of the money that MCE is putting into the first year in Marin County. And it, it gets us up to using a little bit more than 50% of our budgeted $345,000 for this category.
Go ahead, Derek.
In terms of the funding level, the $80,000 represents the high watermark from the previous year of $60,000 in rebates expended for EV chargers, along with $20,000 in technical and marketing, or marketing and outreach for this program.
The budgeted number.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm sorry. The budgeted number is 345,000. And last year, if I'm not mistaken, it was 435,000, but we didn't come close to expending it.
Yes, the expended funds for EV chargers last year were approximately $60,000. And so in determining the $80,000, we took the existing level of expended funds, along with a marketing and outreach budget to get us to $80,000. We do have funds available in reserve to increase this amount. But we would want to make sure that we're meeting our commitments for the 138 chargers that are in process, as well as retaining the ability to attract CEC funding in the next round. So if we were to say double the budget, it might be more advantageous for us to consider doubling the budget for this program when there's CEC funding on the table. They have the deepest pockets when compared to our limited pocket and MCE's medium-sized pocket. And we think that there might be an opportunity to attract more funding if CEC is coming to the table with additional funding.
Okay. Does our executive director have anything to add to this?
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, based on this last couple remarks, that the funding that, that would be available in the first year of this agreement, should it be approved by CEC or awarded, would be for Marin, it would just be the TAM funds and the MCE funds. We would not be getting any funding from CEC in year one. However, we would be able to reapply and would be in a good position, potentially, because of the relationship with MCE and the funding that would be going through that MCE agreement to the other three counties. So we would be able to reapply in year two for funding from the CEC. So I think what Derek is saying is that it would be more advantageous to up the TAM funding amount in that year-two application in order to attract the state funds, because we already know that for this year, Marin is not going to be getting the CEC fund.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, any from the public? Molly?
There was no, there was no public comment for this, thank you.
All right. So I'm, we're ready now to have a motion that would authorize the executive director to enter into an MOU with MCE and for the infrastructure project, CalVIP, and authorize $80,000 for Marin electric vehicle charging. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleveland Knob?
Yes.
Commissioner Colbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly? Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cool?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Adam Chair, how about you?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. We are down to 10, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And that is, we are now going to approve and review fiscal year 21, 2021 Measure AA and One Half Cent Transportation Sales Tax and the Measure B, 10 vehicle reg, $10 vehicle registration and fee revenue estimate and budget development schedule. So we're inching our way to the budget. All right, please go ahead.
Thank you. So commissioners, this item is related to next year's fiscal year budget. And under normal circumstances, this would probably be an item that would not garner much attention. However, at this time, we did want to provide you with a presentation to kind of give you a sense of where things are with the revenue estimates at this time. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of information that we have as of yet in terms of actual revenue impacts, but obviously we can all see what's going on around us. So this is a presentation that will be given by our Chief Financial Officer, Lee, to introduce you to the budget development for the year. So Lee, if you're ready, I think we have the presentation queued up.
Thank you, Ann. Good evening, commissioners. Can everyone here be okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So well, as Ann mentioned, for those of you who have been with TAM during the past budget development cycles, you may recall that this item usually do not require much of the board's attention at this stage of the budget cycle, other than to, you know, approve the recommended upcoming year sales tax and the vehicle registration fee revenue level as part of your consent agenda. But however, as what we all know, and you probably.
But however, as what we all know and you probably have heard many times from your agency and various other agencies, this budget cycle, the uncertainty we're facing is just unprecedented. At this time point, you know, it is probably safe for me to say that none of us know exactly how this whole COVID-19 induced economic crisis would work out. And at this time point, staff is not asking for a revisit of what was recommended by staff to the administration projects and planning executive committee back in March in terms of the revenue level for the upcoming year. But we want to take this opportunity to walk through a few measures staff have been put in place to help the projects and programs and also our funding agencies to flatten the funding curve in this current fiscal year. With that, Denise, would you please move to the next slide? So, you know, this is really, I'm going to go over this really quickly. As we all know, the initial shelter in place was ordered back in March 16 and originally up to April 7. Now we're looking at May 3. And based on the facts, the schools are out until the end of June. It's probably very likely that will continue in some form until that time period. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, based on the various shelter in place timeline, you know, the big concern we have here really is on the sales tax. Assuming, as everybody afraid right now, once we, everybody kind of get into the shelter in place situation, nobody is really buying. So if, based on the original April 7, we're looking at less than a month. And then May 3, we're looking about a month and a half. If we are talking about towards the end of June, we're looking at up to three and a half months. So that's the potential impact on the sales tax collection for this, all in this current fiscal year. Next slide. So the general concern, of course, you know, I'm actually personally, I'm still trying to stay hopeful, but everybody is really trying to prepare for the worst. So we are assuming sales tax revenue will drop significantly during this time period. We had a self-county conference call a couple of weeks ago and we had counties projecting drops as high as 90% for the March to June time period, which, you know, on an annual basis would mean they have a 20% revenue collection reduction. And then we also had counties, actually it's Orange County, was a little bit more optimistic compared to some of the other counties that actually only projected 5% drop for the current year. So based on the experience Marin had over the last few recession cycles, just because the economic base and the demographics we have in the county, we do weather recessions a little better than the other counties. For example, during the 2008 recession, we, the worst year for Marin was about 13% drop. And then down at Santa Clara County, they were looking at close to 30%. So we're hoping that still, you know, is the case for this cycle if we do go into a deeper recession here. So moving to the next slide. The really, the difficult part for this cycle is really, it's the uncertainties. You know, during most of the time period, either you know the economy is going up or it's going down. But with this one, you know, it is induced, as we know, by the virus. So when can we have the virus under control? It's actually kind of like a deciding factor on how everything else can work out. And then also, as we all know, we have so many different stimulus package at federal level, state level, local level, and how those all work together to eventually kind of really help us through, you know, hopefully a few crisis time period and then get us into the recovery period. It's still, you know, unknown to anybody. And then also, the governor has been talking about reopening economy. And then we need to know more details in terms exactly what that means and then what kind of impact that will have. So for those of us who are probably positive and optimistic, you know, we're hoping there's a V-shaped recovery, which means once we get through this few months, once we get into the recovery period, next year we're going to have no problem at all. But we also know we could have a U-shape, which would take a little bit longer for us to really go back to normal and potentially, the worst case, an L-shape, which means we probably have to suffer for a couple more years before we see the revenue come back up. So next slide. I actually personally very like the pictures we see on here. So as you can see on the, on the left of slides, it's the mall in the city. Obviously, there's no traffic, all the stores closed. But then the picture on the right, actually, it is a verified real shopper. This is, a friend shared this picture of her neighbor shopping the first week after we got into shelter in place. So again, as we said, you know, really what's going, what's happening out there? What's really going to happen? It's still so many uncertainties for us to say for sure. But if we are looking at a reduction, depends on which scenario works out, we are looking at potentially for this current year, a 1 million to 4 million drop in the sales tax. So moving to the next slides, as I mentioned, we are not recommending any change of the current, of the upcoming year of the 2021 revenue estimate at this time point, just because we really don't know and where we're going with the current information. What we're hoping is by May, we will know more to actually give the board a couple of recommendations to decide. But what we want to do is normally, at this time of the budget cycle, the TAM actually will use the February revenue estimate, which is close to actual, for the current year as our allocation and programming base for the upcoming year. This way, we allow, you know, if there's an increase, we allow the funding agencies to be able to access the carryover much sooner. But in this time period, just because all the uncertainty we have, to be conservative, we are recommending that we actually do not use the 20 and a half million that we recommended that we, in the, in the March APP executive committee meeting. And we maintain the revenue we're using for the upcoming year's allocation process at the budget level, which is the 27 and a half million. And on the other hand, we're also going to release some reserve funds to the funding agencies to help them smooth out the funding, funding drop here. So moving to the next slides. So those are the actions we are taking to help flatten the funding curve to the funding agencies. We are going to release the 1.75 million Measure A reserve on a one-to-one ratio based on the estimate Measure A, Measure A reserve collected by June 30. So we did release, so even though we're recommending not to use the 20 and a half for the overall allocation, we did still use that for the reserve calculation just so we can release a little bit more reserve to the funding recipients in this case. And then also, the other thing we, we're going to put in place is we're going to suspend the 5% Measure A reserve collection for the upcoming year. So this way, with the new revenue, the funding agencies actually can access to that 5% right away. And the measures we're going to take, back to you for decision in May, is really we are going to take another close look, hopefully with a lot better information to, of the, of the proposed 2021 revenue base for both the sales tax, mostly after sales tax. We're not really worried about the vehicle registration fee at this time point just because of the nature of the revenue. And then if needed, we can talk about the potential release of more reserve funds and also how much and how do we release it to the funding agency to further help the project sponsors flatten the funding curve. The discussion we had with some funding agencies, mostly more in transit at this time point, is they will have enough to go through next year. Next year, short-term wise, you know, it's not a problem. It's really long-term what's going to happen. So if things does look pretty bad still in July, I think we will, we will bring you options in terms how we can release the reserve to help them hopefully ease into the next couple of years. Moving to the next slide. So the action we need for the board tonight, again, as I said, we're not recommending any of the change to the current revenue level for the upcoming year. We thought we were pretty conservative when we recommended. We assumed a mild recession and so assumed the next year's revenue level at 27 to 5 million for the sales tax. And we recommended the 2.42 million for the vehicle registration fee for the upcoming year. And then along with this, we also ask you obviously to approve the proposed budget schedule. So that's the action staff is looking for tonight. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Even though I might not have to answer.
Okay. Oh, that's serious. There you are. Any questions or comments, either one? I'm not sure I understand.
Quick question. I'll jump in. When you say that we'll forego the 5% measured double A's reserve set aside, I mean, how does that interrelate with overall reserve levels?
So for the benefit of the, you know, it's really for the new board members as well as just to refresh memory, when we approved the new reserve policy last year for Measure AA, what we decided is we actually will maintain the reserve under Measure A and we will start collecting under Measure A, 5% off the top every year. And at the end of each year, we will release on a one-on-one ratio what we collected out of the Measure A reserve. So in a way, even though we're not collecting the 5% out of Measure AA, our reserve level will still be at 5.8 million, which is still pretty, pretty healthy. And obviously, the purpose of the reserve is really, it can come in to play and save us, you know, help us smooth out the curve during times like this.
One else?
I have a question.
Yes, Dan.
I had a city council meeting earlier this afternoon where we were taking some pretty drastic measures to give our management flexibility to reduce what were otherwise predicted budget landmarks. I'm curious as to why we're not making any adjustments at all.
I want to make sure I fully understand the question. So when you said you giving the managers' ability to making budget adjustment, it's on the current year budget or the upcoming year?
They were predicting having to make adjustments somewhere on the order of 10 to 12% even on budgets we've already approved for the next year.
So on that note, yeah, as I said, we are going to bring some numbers back in, in May to ask you reconsider the revenue level if needed. But I do want to point out, you know, the city, the local jurisdictions are in operations. So the impact is right away, very direct. And TAM as a funding agency, the impact, it does allow us to have a little bit more time. And also, just because the locals are really suffering at your local revenue level, we want to actually smooth out the funding impact from this agency because we do have the ability with the reserve we have in place that we can actually gradually start to release that reserve. So for example, even if we decide to reduce the 27 and a half million in May down to 26 million, what we could do is we would release the equivalent amount of reserve to still make the funding that the local agencies can expect. In this case, it's mostly Marin Transit and the local streets and roads money that they can expect at the 27 and a half million. So in a way, I think we do have the ability to help them not have to worry about us kind of, you know, being part of the, part of the picture and have to reduce what they can expect from us dramatically. Because one thing, just so you know, we have already sent out the local streets and roads number to the local agencies. And then we have been in discussion with Marin Transit back and forth on what level they can expect for next year. So we're really just trying to use the measures, the ways, the options we have to help kind of make that more predictable for them.
So am I understanding you to say that the lag in your understanding of the timing of things is going to allow you to wait to make these adjustments?
So I guess, let me try to rephrase that a bit. It is partly true, but the most important is really, you know, we have the reserve to allow us, if there's about 10% drop, we have the reserve to actually still allow us to gave the local agencies, the funding agencies, the same level of the funding. So we just don't want to alarm them unnecessarily. We don't want to create another, you know, another revenue drop for them just yet. Because for the next, for the upcoming year, we can help. This is, we can help them flatten the curve. You know, I can kind of keep using this, the funding curve a little bit. We probably can do that for them, really depends on how bad the drop is. If it's about 10% each year, we probably can help them smooth that out for the next two years. But if we're looking at a 20% drop, then it's a different story. Again, just because the information we have right now, it's the same as what we had in March. But we are hopeful with the reopening of the economy, with the process progress we're making under control, you know, getting the, getting the virus situation under control. We're hoping we will have more information, better information by the May board meeting. And then, then we can come up with a more solid plan to help with the planning.
So I'm to understand that the, you're giving the executive director the flexibility she needs at this time?
I think staff do have the flexibility, yeah, with the resource we have right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else has a question? Yes?
This is not, oh, I'm sorry. Were you, were you looking at somebody else, Judy?
It's the Michael Bear and then are you, are you next, David?
After Michael.
Hey, Commissioner Colbert, go for it.
Oh, great, yeah. You know, I just got to say, like, I don't know where, I'm not quite sure I understand this concept of reopening the economy. So I'm hoping that when it comes forth in May, that we are, we are sort of looking at what could be a very long economic slog in this county. And we are, we have a series of decisions that this board has to take that are tough and are forward-looking. I'm, yeah, I'm just not seeing that at all. So, I mean, to Dan's point, like, I'm looking to my local council members or saying what decisions we have to make because I'm not quite sure where the consumer demand is coming for, for sales tax. If the businesses are closed, people are losing jobs and there's a whole lot of economic uncertainty. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuhnhart?
In view of the significant shutdown and as Commissioner Connolly reported, 50% drop in traffic, isn't it a great time to do some more local roadwork? I'm wondering if there are any project funds that are available to us in our budgeting that we can accelerate in order to get some additional money into the economy and additional buying power outgoing and flowing out there? While we have a lot of areas available to us that were infrastructure improvements that have already been improved, approved by us, could be accelerated? Is there any room for that kind of, that kind of management?
So Anne, I can, I can address it, you know, briefly and then you might want to jump in. So just so you know, in terms, the projects and programs this agency is working on, at least for, you know, we're not slowing down, assuming the slowing down of any of the projects we're working on for the upcoming year due to the pandemic situation we experienced. And then as Anne mentioned, the Fed, you know, the Feds pull a lot of money into helping transportation projects. I think there are more stimulus package towards infrastructure projects on the way. So I think, again, I think there's so many pieces and everybody at all different level are trying different ways to really basically pull us through this, pull us out this, out of this as fast as we can so we don't cost long-term. this, uh, out of this as fast as we can, so we don't cause long-term damage, permit, more permanent damage to the economy. But I think, Ann, you probably have more specific information in terms of projects and, and that programs that we can actually advance with the funding.
I think that's a, that's a great question. We did start to look at that when the shutdown first happened, whether there were contracts that we could advance, put in place sooner, do a, you know, kind of a partial notice to proceed, just to get them moving. That's easier obviously with some types of projects than with others. For instance, with a major construction project, they usually kind of have their own course. We're very excited about the North South Greenway, which is a pretty significant, you know, probably ten to fifteen million dollar project that we hope will be out to construction in the next few months. We've also been talking with the local jurisdictions about whether they can take advantage of the lull in traffic to advance some of their projects. I know Caltrans is looking at exactly that throughout all of their service areas and I think the local jurisdictions are trying to, although at the same time, they have a lot of other things that they have to balance, so they may not be able to do that in every case, but we will absolutely go back and take another look at that. I think we're, we're on the same page with respect to that.
I'm delighted to hear that.
And I hope, uh, I hope, Ann, you guys, you're talking to the county about the Sir Francis Drake Project where the bids just got opened today and I don't know if there's a shortfall or not, but boy, the more work we could do this summer there, the better.
Yes, I've been in touch with them about that and I don't have the bid results either, but, um, we will definitely give them a call tomorrow to follow up. Thanks.
Great. Okay, any more questions or comments on the budget? Okay. This is an action item, correct? Yes. Uh, do we have any public comment on the budget?
There were no public comments on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a motion to approve and review the budget, uh, and, uh, vehicle registration estimate and budget development schedule. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And you get who's, and who's second?
I did, Gary did, Gary called.
All right, go for it. Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Carmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleveland-Nose?
Yes.
Commissioner Colbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cool?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
And Chair Arnold? Yes. Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, well, this brings us to item eleven. Do we have someone that is sharing the, uh, Caltrans report or is this like Marin only?
Well, um, the report is included in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I can highlight just a couple of things quickly. So, one is the North South Greenway project that I've mentioned a couple of times is included in this report. Also like to note that Caltrans did, I think, somewhat advanced work that they were doing at TAM Junction and at Mansumita Park and Ride related to sidewalk and pedestrian improvement. So that work, I believe, is underway. The Sir Francis Drake overcrossing, the bicycle pedestrian barrier there, I believe the construction on that is expected to start shortly. Um, and I did want to clarify one thing in the report related to the Central San Rafael Off-Ramp Bridge Replacement Project. It's described in this report as starting in the spring, um, but that has to do with the contracting and the actual construction on the project won't start for quite some months. So those are a few of the highlights from the report. And if anyone has any questions, we can try to answer them.
Any other questions about the Caltrans report? Okay. Well, I want to thank staff and I especially want to thank the executive director. We were talking earlier and said, did you ever imagine when you took this job that you'd be in the middle of a pandemic? But, um, it's gone, it's going seamlessly and we're all thankful for that. Director Carmel would want to welcome you and to let you know if you didn't understand a word that went on tonight, none of us did when we started and it will get better. And, um, yes, Commissioner Kuhnhart, um, I understand that if Porta Madera is on schedule with their, uh, voting for, uh, appoint, appointment, that may, our next meeting, May fifth, might be your last meeting. So, uh, we, I wanted to make sure and let us know, um, so that we can be ready for that. And I know that you think that there, there's going to be a, uh, an appointment to you, that you think is, will come on in your place, but, um, let us know what's happening. We'll miss you.
Tonight, thank you so much for saying that. Tonight, I believe is my last official meeting if, if our appointment process works according to plan.
Okay, all right.
And my replace, my replacement, I believe, was, uh, one of the observers in the public tonight, so that he can see.
Okay, great. All right, well, with all of that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay. We are, all those in favor, just say yes. Yes!
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job Judy.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.